I'd like to call to order a meeting in the Novi Public Library Thursday, June 27, 2025. Shall we start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all. I'll ask our secretary to do the roll call.
Trustee Bartlett.
Here.
Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Dooley's here. Trustee Helvengus.
Here.
Trustee Gualapu.
Yes, here.
Trustee Sturridge.
Here.
And Student Representative DeMoor.
Here.
And Student Representative Doadwalla is absent, excused.
We have in front of us the agenda. Any comments to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Would you call the vote, please?
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Helvengus.
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu.
Yes.
Trustee Sturridge.
Yes.
And Trustee Bartlett.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Any comments on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, ask the secretary to call the vote.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Helvengus.
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu.
Yes.
Trustee Sturridge.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Next item is presentations, and I'll turn it over to Julie.
So, I bring you bad news. It is, it's bad news. Hillary Hunchell, Hillary, come on up and join me. Hillary has been our Information Services Department Head for the last two years, but she's been with us over seven years at NPL. She came very young and ready to start in her library career, coming from Gale, which is actually a company that creates a lot of databases that libraries use. Hillary is amazing with proofreading and with her grammar, and so that was part of her job when she worked with Gale. And then she got her library degree and she applied to us. And she's had two wonderful babies while she's been with us, and her husband has been very much a part of our community. They live here in Novi. Couple months ago, Hillary announced that she's going to move back to St. Louis, Missouri area because her parents and her sisters live there, and she's going to join her family and take her children back. So, we are sad because Hillary has been an absolute joy to work with over the last two years, specifically working with me as a department head. I am so privileged to have met her, worked with her. I was hoping that she'd continue and maybe along the years kind of take, you know, a different path with me, but that's okay. But what she's going to do is take a wonderful path with her family and move back. And so, we're saying goodbye to her tonight. You've all received a wonderful invitation to join us. We'll be celebrating Hillary in July, the middle of July. She'll be leaving the 12th. We're going to be celebrating on the 11th at the library. But tonight, I asked her to join us so that I could officially, with the library board, say a few words and thank her for the many wonderful years that she has given us. I have a certificate that I am going to present to her tonight, and I'd like to read it. Hillary Hunchell, in grateful recognition of over seven years of service to the Novi Public Library, thank you for providing exceptional leadership in your role as Department Head of Information Services, championing state staff needs, building stronger public policies, overseeing a new strategic plan, implementing exceptional services to the Novi community, and connecting NPL with local Novi businesses. Your accomplishments have strengthened our organization. Hillary was very excited to be part of our strategic plan, took an awesome lead on it. She's also been the face of our community with being a chamber member and going to many of the functions that we have in supporting our business community. Hillary shared and taught a lot of our chamber members' business databases and things that connect them with the library. Hillary, when she took the position, actually was faced with some major staff shortages, and she championed right through them to keep not only the current staff, you know, working and staying strong and building their morale and letting them know that it would be okay, but filling those positions and building her team. I'm so proud of her. I wish she was not leaving us. I'm not crying tonight because I've already done enough. She truly is leaving a wonderful legacy in just the couple of years that she's been in a management role. I told her that if she ever needs to call on me for anything or she needs some wonderful adjectives to describe who she is and what she's done for us, I will definitely do that and would be very grateful. So, on behalf of myself and the staff, I'm wishing her the very best, but wanted the opportunity for you to also share your sentiments to Hillary as well, because I know many of you have interacted with her over the years, and she has definitely made a huge impact on our wonderful Novi Public Library. So, thank you. Love you. I didn't prepare any remarks, but I just, I'll, thank you so much. It really, it's been an honor. It's been really a highlight of my professional career to be here, you know. It's impossible to predict if you'd asked me a year ago if I would ever leave Novi, I would have said absolutely not. I'm here for the long haul. I really was very committed to staying here and keeping this my home, and then, you know, life throws curveballs at you that you have to respond to. So, although I am excited for the next chapter, for me personally, it has been, as I was sharing with some of you earlier, just very bittersweet professionally, because I have loved working for this library, I have loved working with this community, I've loved working with this staff. They're incredible. Thank you for the support that you have given them over the last couple of years that I've been overseeing them, the things that you have supported really have made a big positive difference. So, I wish everybody all the best. I'm rooting for you, and Julie will have my number. Please share your successes, as I'm rooting for you from Missouri. So, thank you very much.
Thank you ever so much for your services. I mean, you had some difficult times with shortage of staffs, and you always did such a wonderful job, and you always had a smile on your face and everything else. So, thank you very much. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Again, it's always good to be near to the parents. I'm really happy about it. I really, I know the pain of it, so I'm really happy about it. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. I'm typing while. I just wanted to also say thank you. I could tell just from our interactions together, especially during strategic plan, that you really are so wonderful in terms of how you articulate and how you lead and take care of everybody, and so I wish you the best with your family, and I hope that you don't leave Library Sciences forever, because it needs you. So, thank you so much for everything. Thank you. And I just want to say, Hillary, that in case you think you really haven't had much of a chance to make a big impression in the library or whatever, I want you to know that the library has changed as a result of you, in a positive way. So, you have made an imprint on us, and we'll all come and visit you, I'm sure, unless you come back. We'll come and get you. Yeah, maybe you shouldn't leave us your address. No, I love Missouri myself. But anyway, we, like I said before, if anything changes, you know where we are. I'll be back. I told her, I said, you have until July 12th, that's the date, but you can always change. Yeah. I feel like the 65th anniversary coming up at some point, so, you know. Oh, yeah, come back. Me and mine, I'll come back. So. Thank you for the opportunity for letting me recognize her tonight. I think it's very important, because she's just truly made a huge impact on us, and we are going to miss you very much. So, thank you. Thank you. Come and have treats and funny stuff with us on the 11th. You all got invited.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. In order to hear all the citizens at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that the speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. Anybody from the public want to make a comment? Hearing none, we will move on to the report section of our agenda. May I ask Student Representative to report?
So, as for the tween and teen library programs, the Club Half-Bread Program was held on May 2nd. This event was for all fans of Greek mythology, monsters, and mayhem. Those loving Percy Jackson joined our monthly club for book talks, snacks, games, and crafts inspired by the books. The attendance for this event was eight. The Novi Chess Club program was held on May 16th and May 30th. This event provides an opportunity for teens and tweens to participate in games, learn about chess, and sharpen their skills. The attendance was 19. As for the Teen Space update, a total of 822 guests visited Teen Space. The breakdown for each week is shown below. Teen Space was not in session on the following dates, on May 24th for parking lot repaving, and May 27th for Memorial Day. Overall, this was a great month for Teen Space. On Wednesday, May 8th, we offered llama-shaped sun catchers as a fun way to celebrate Cinco de Mayo. On Thursday, May 16th, Taylor, the Youth and Teen Programming Assistant, held a wand-making craft in the Teen Space that drew a lot of participants that we weren't expecting to be interested. It was a calmer month in terms of activities, because we've been eagerly planning and looking forward to our end-of-the-year party in June. As for the Teen Advisory update, the ninth and final tab meeting of the year was held on May 17th. The end of the year was celebrated with an ice cream sundae party. Members also viewed a wrap-up presentation made by the historian. An additional officer elections were held to determine new officers for the 2024-2025 school year. This was a fun way to ease into summer and celebrate another successful year with the Novi Teen Advisory Board. Our total attendance was 20. As for upcoming programs, the Summer Reading Program will begin on Monday, June 3rd, and ends on Saturday, August 10th. Tuesday Tunes on the Patio will be held on July 2nd, 16th, and 30th. Black and Brown Theater presents Rapunzel on July 10th. Novi Chess Club will be held on July 11th and July 18th. The Comedy Magic Family Show will be held on July 17th. Wizards, Wands, and Potions with Sloan, the Museum of Discovery in Longway Planetarium will be held on July 24th. As for the Teen Stop Display, the Dear Asian Youth Novi Group has partnered with us again this year to set up the May Teen Stop Display for Asian-American and Pacific Island Heritage Month. And as for the other Teen Space report, during June of 2024, there was 203 guests who visited Teen Space, with all 203 on the first week of June. The rest was zero because of some summer break. So, Teen Space is not in session on June 7th for half-day, and from June 10th to June 28th due to summer break. Teen Space 2023-2024 finished with a bang. They had an end-of-year party in which almost 80 students attended. Another big thank you to Lindsay, Anna, and Austin, who helped with the food and the crafts. The final total for Teen Space attendance this year is 8,751 visits. This is a very, very large number, and it couldn't have happened without the amazing staff here supporting Aiden and the program. She has absolutely treasured this experience and is sad to be leaving. But sincere thank you to all for the kindness support, and she's going to miss you guys very much. So, don't worry, she's coming back to visit. From Aiden Palmer.
Aiden is our teen monitor that assisted us in the space this year. She's actually going on to take, for further education and moving out of state to Wisconsin, so we are losing her, and we're doing a little shift with Teen Space next year. What I've asked is that some of our teen librarians actually take time to be part of Teen Space this year, trying to connect better our employees and get a sense of the space and share the time that's going to be in Teen Space this year, so we're not actually filling the position, but getting other librarians that are on staff to participate and build some relationships. That's how it was first introduced to the community years and years ago when we started it, with our own employees and it being librarians, so that we could plan for programming and kind of shift and maybe add things quickly and make decisions a little faster. So, we're doing it with a team. There will be close to five staff members that are participating as part of a committee that will actually service the Teen Space next year. So, trying something a little different for the fall, even though I don't want to talk about fall yet, and the fact that school's starting before Labor Day this year, this is the first time ever, but they're gearing up to looking at a new way of approaching the space and making connections with the teens. But that 8,751, that is much bigger than last year, so the teens are back, they're using the space, they're appreciating the space. I want to thank, I know that Aiden is no longer with us, but she did just an amazing job connecting with the students. Lindsay Gojai, who is the Youth and Teen Services Supervisor, did a fabulous job working with Aiden, you know, to make the space a welcoming environment and to provide a place that the teens want to hang out and socialize in, which is a little different from some of the other places in the building. You know, we try to have those quieter areas so that you service all different users, but knowing that we have that high school population and the need that they have, and the fact that they've been in school all day, and they come over to us and don't necessarily want to sit right away and start studying. They get there. You all do, because they're amazing, but they need a little time to just, you know, relax and take a break. The café is wonderful, and that Teen Space serves that purpose. So, we've been really proud to have that space and be able to designate it specifically to our teens. I do thank the board, because, you know, that's a large space that we give up, and we actually dedicate to our teens Monday through Friday, and I think it sends a great message that we care about them, and we want them to know that they are welcome and they have a place in our community and in our library. So, we'll be reporting back on how, you know, the new way of going about the space is for the new year. It's a trial year. I told the staff, if we don't think it works, we can always go back, but I'd like to just see more interaction so that the teens get to know more of the staff by having other people involved in the space. So, thank you so much, Alexandra. I know you're done with your school year. The student reps will be back next month. They're planning to do their annual presentation, so they will present to you everything that happened over the last year and what they've accomplished, and the types of numbers and events that they hosted. So, I'll make sure that they are on the agenda, but I hope you have a wonderful summer and enjoy your July, okay? Do you want to talk a little bit about the new students?
Yes.
Go for it. Great.
So, we would like to welcome our two Summer Teen Leader volunteers, Grace Ty and Rebecca Borley. Grace and Rebecca will be helping out at the first-floor information desk, starting June 5th through mid-August, assisting the IAF staff with all things Summer Reading Program related, including registering patrons, logging books read, passing out prizes, helping out programs, and more. Thank you to the Friends of Novi Library for supporting these positions. Each Summer Teen Leader will earn a $500 stipend after completing a minimum of 100 volunteer hours.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra. Any questions? Thank you very much for the report. Any questions, Alexandra?
All right. Have a wonderful summer.
Thank you.
Okay. Enjoy.
The committee assignments are on page 18. There's nothing really new there, and I know that we have a lot of business to conduct tonight, so I'll be short. I know in the past, we've talked about maybe questioning the hours of the library, and I just want to indicate, I was up in Traverse City this past week, and I've always admired the Traverse City library. They do a very good job. They have actually moved their hours an hour earlier, and they close an hour earlier. I don't know exactly when that happened, and I didn't have a chance to talk to anybody to find out reaction, but they are an example of a library that has made that move.
I appreciate you bringing that up, because we are seeing a trend where the last hour of our evenings, where we're open till nine, seems very, very quiet. So, it is something that I would like to have a conversation with all of you about, and maybe considering that in the future. We've seen it since COVID happened, and it hasn't made a change back. We are literally, and you see the numbers actually in the packet. I purposely put them in there so you can see what that last hour of usage is, and it is very, very, very small compared to what it used to be years ago. I think people have changed a little bit their trend of where they are and what they're doing later in the evening, and so I would appreciate if we could talk about that. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, I'm going to move, well, anybody, any other trustees have any comments or activities they want to talk about that relates to the library? Kathy?
Okay. Just wanted to report that I attended the first Paradise Park concert last Thursday, and Gale said something like only 35 have registered, but I think about 85 or 90 showed up. So, you know, if there's anybody that actually watches our meetings, you might want to make your reservation, because there will come a time with some of these concerts that are so popular that we may not have enough room for everybody. It's a free concert, but, you know, you need to make a reservation with the library, just so we have an idea of how many chairs and tables to set up and that kind of thing. But anyway, it was off to a good start, despite the really hot weather.
And you had some crazy rain, too.
It turned cool just as the concert was starting. Also, the Historical Commission had their program last week, and it was a program, the history of the Coney Islands, the Conies, and the Coney Dog. And it was really, it was very well-attended. We actually are happy to report we're back up to pre-COVID numbers in our audience now. There were about 80 people there, and I appreciate some of the board members being there, because it was really good. And I think the next program will be, we sort of take a little bit of a break in the summer, and then we'll be starting again in September, so hopefully, you know, we'll have numbers increasing as we go, so I think there will be.
My husband and I enjoyed the Coney night very much. That was enjoyable.
We did actually get a donation of the Coney chili from a local Coney Island here in Novi, and we served half Coney Dogs. So, I don't know if that was the reason why we had so many people there.
No, because you didn't advertise that part.
No, we didn't advertise that part. We did not advertise that we were going to serve Conies, but we did have Conies.
Yeah, yes. The author was entertaining. His presentation was just great. My husband loves Conies, and so he was a big reason why we were there, and I kind of was going along going, I wonder what this is going to be, but it really was very interesting. A lot of interesting information and some laughs, so that was very fun.
Good. Glad you were there. Thanks.
Yeah. And I also did attend two webinars from, you know, the trustee, beginning trustee webinars, and I thought they were very helpful. There's still so much I feel like I have to learn, but I did appreciate being there and them answering our questions and all the information we gleaned, so that was good. Well worth it.
Let me know if you need anything or want any questions.
Oh, I will talk to you about some other things, so.
Happy to help out. I also would like to add something. We had a wonderful partnership with Fox Run on the 21st of June. It was at Fox Run, and it was a pride event where we actually hosted Judy Lewis. She spoke about being an ally for your children and grandchildren. We had over 50 attendees at the event in partnership with Fox Run, and I just want to thank them for us having the space and the opportunity to be there and getting out in the community a little bit, not just, not necessarily being at the building, but it was a wonderful first-time opportunity for us to partner for that type of program, and it was very successful.
I had a chance to see the video from Dana Van Oost, Beyond Books, and just probably about a half hour, 45 minutes ago. It was a wonderful, wonderful presentation. She did a good job promoting the library. The two guests from Edward Jones and from the Novi Rotary were great guests, and it was very good.
Both of them are partners this summer with the program, so that's, if they're, based on the sponsorship that they decide on, they get an opportunity to be on camera and share a little bit either about a business or the organization that they're part of. So, that's the city's new studio, so we get an opportunity to benefit from using the studio and doing different programming, and that was the first time that Dana got a chance to get in there, so thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. Yeah, I thought she did a great job.
They all did a good job.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
So, I had the chance to attend the Juneteenth program, and my son came with me. So, usually every year when we have the Juneteenth program, trustee Crawford, I know, has been several times, but I always miss it because I'm at a baseball tournament for my son. So, this year, it was on a weekday, and it was just an hour long, but it was pretty profound. And we didn't have tons of people this year, which kind of made me sad, and I don't know if it was the time of day or whatever. It's always variable, but it was such a great program. The musicians were wonderful, and then there was a reenactment that was done, kind of like an interpretation of what it was like for the slaves to finally be freed during that time after the emancipation proclamation, I think. And so, it was just a really great experience, and my son wasn't the only young person in there, which was cool. There was somebody else in there. But I just encourage everybody to hopefully attend next year, too, because it was a lot of things that I learned that were new as well, and I appreciated that. So, tell Gale and everybody thank you, please.
Anybody else? If not, we'll turn it over to trustee, I mean, to the treasurer for the treasurer's report.
Okay. We're closing up. This is the last month of the fiscal year, so next month, we will get our final numbers in, some highlights of the meeting that we've had, looking at what the final numbers look like. We are, our deficit is not going to be as bad as we thought it was, but primarily, we're still, we still have a bit of a, basically, we're not spending as much on employment, because we haven't been quite at full employment. We're much closer this last year than we have been in previous years. And the other part is, is our finances came in, our financial picture as far as investments have done better than we expected, but just a cautionary comment on that is we are spending real dollars, and our investments are all paper, are all paper profits at this point. So, they are not, they are not solid dollars. Of course, we hope and anticipate that they will maintain where they're at now, and we anticipate that they will turn into real dollars, but that's where basically we're coming in at this point.
There was an explanation provided for you on page 19 that gives you a little of information that the Finance Committee had asked about in relation to the unrealized gain and the interest, so that we did receive an explanation from the city, so that you have that. And I'll now carry that information into our budget, information in packet, so that we have that every year, and we can keep refreshing ourselves and reminding ourselves about what that means. And then, I did provide a little bit of information at the bottom of page 19. We were asked, you know, to find out what the city's current percentage is for their fund balance, and I gave you the actual, the city's information that came out in April so that you could see that, and then also gave you currently what we're paying as it relates to all of salaries and fringe benefits and the retirement. We're averaging about 73% of the budget. The city averages about 76%, and the industry standard is between 70 and 75. So, we're in that range, so that's, so I wanted to give you that information as well. Are there any questions to the info that I provided from the city, that memo, so that you could see that information? Okay, just wanted you to have it.
I just had a question about when you say we're going to wait and see, what does that look like? I'm not familiar with that. At what point do we find out if that's going to?
Well, basically, at this point, not all the securities have been cashed in.
Right.
So, it's like looking at your, it's like looking at any of your statements and saying, okay, here's where our investments are today, where, you know, it isn't a hard and fast, you know, we haven't received cash from it, so, you know, it's all investments, they can go up and they can go down. But at this point, I mean, it's just the way investing is. Most of our, most of our budget, though, two-thirds of our budget is salaries, so two-thirds of our budget is paying out real dollars.
Right, right.
So, we're paying out real dollars, and we're basically depending on the investments to be there. It's just.
Right, and when, but when would we cash in the investment? When you go and you withdraw or whatever?
That's all done by the city.
Oh, that's all the city stuff? Okay, I got you.
Yeah, that's all, all our investing is managed by the city.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for trustee Bartlett? If not, we'll turn it over to the director's report.
I am on page 36. I'd like to start first with our July anniversaries that are coming up. May, she is 25 years. May actually was a librarian and worked at May actually was a librarian and worked at our Information Services Department. She is now a substitute librarian and helps us out on a regular basis, but she has been with the organization twenty-five years. Dana, Dana Van Oost, she is our Communications Manager, five years she'll be celebrating this year, and she's in our Administration Office. Keith Perfect is twelve years, and he's with our Facilities Department. Donna Philippiak is eight years, and she is one of our clerks in our Support Services Department. Tracy Pelletier, she is a clerk, and she's with our Support Services Department, and Sarah Vander. Sarah is one of our substitute librarians as well with our Information Services Department, and she's celebrating six years. So congratulations to all of our employees that are coming up on July anniversaries. I wanted to put in that we did receive our second installment of a five-thousand-dollar donation specifically for international language materials. If you can see that photo there, that is one, two, three, four, five shelves of materials that we were able to purchase that will be heading out to the shelves, that's actually behind the scenes, getting ready to go out, but those are some of the many wonderful materials that were purchased by a anonymous donor in our community. Next to it is the book plate that they worked with us on, that they wanted put into each book that was purchased, and as you see, it says, "In memory of our parents who immigrated to America to search for a better life." I love that. I think it's just wonderful that they're making that recognition. Lower part of the page, we have started summer reading, which is very exciting for us. I would like to thank the committee, which is Dana, Danielle, Shannon, Kirsten, Anna, Austin, Ray, Jen, Taylor, and Lindsay. Lindsay is our Youth and Teen Services Supervisor, and she kind of heads up all of this and kind of navigates everyone, gets things, keeps things in order, so a huge thank you to her and this wonderful committee for all of their hard work, because right now, the kids are coming in daily, they're coming to programming, they're, they're tracking their books that they're reading, and right now, it's just, there's just a lot of activity and fun happening in the library every day. If you move on to page thirty-eight, we are very proud to have a piece of artwork hanging on the outside of the library. As you go into the front doors, it's to the right, and we're part of the DIA's Inside-Outside Art Exhibit. There are eight pieces in our community alone this summer, so being, you can participate and go around and see all of the pieces that we have in the community, so I'm very excited to be having, to be part of that. It's a wonderful partnership with the DIA. And then I'm, I'm keeping in, just so you don't forget, all of our wonderful concerts that we have happening on Thursdays, Tuesday mornings and Thursday evenings, and then there are reports by our IT, our Information Services Department, our Support Services Department, our statistics. We have some information about the Friends and Historical Commission. Are there any questions related to that? I'm happy to answer.
I would just mention that in Engage, there's actually a bus trip to all the DIA pictures. I forget the date that they're doing that, but, but you could get on a bus and.
I think the city is offering it, yes.
The city's, the city's offering that, yeah.
Yes, yeah. So it gives you a chance to get around town and see everything, yes. And don't forget, the library has an amazing collection of artwork that every, if you're on that tour and you're around the community, stop in and see what we have on our walls as well, because it's pretty amazing. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Regarding the hour, the use by hour.
Yes.
Which we talked about a few minutes ago. So it looks like, as you said, between nine and ten, hardly anybody's there, but how does that reflect with different room rentals that we do? Do they usually stay past nine, or?
It depends. So they can rent before and after hours. It's a different price that we charge, and then we make sure that we have staff in here that accommodates that need, but we don't open until ten AM, so if you're seeing a little bit, this is actually a gate count, so it's literally people in and out of the front doors. That's the best way for us to count it, and then we divide it by two. If you come out, come in, you usually are leaving, right? I hope. So this, these are pretty good true numbers, but that eight to nine o'clock at night is the, the timeframe that we've shown, unless we're having a program that goes a little later in the evening, that would be the only time that you're going to see, you know, some major usage of the building. Between nine and ten AM, if we have a before-hours rental, that, that's when you'd see some activity, or maybe someone coming in, having a meeting with us, or maybe a tour of the schools, but it's minimal in the morning.
But if we change the hours.
If you change them.
Would it reflect in the room rentals?
You, you would have an opportunity, yes, to rent earlier, correct.
Or later.
Mm-hmm, yep. We would still, we would still offer the same opportunities, absolutely, because what I do is I make sure I have the staff first before I confirm a rental, and, and if it's something that would go after hours, then we are paying employees to stay a little longer to be with them, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, great question.
Any other questions on the director's report?
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment. In order to hear all the citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, is an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Library Board. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. Anybody from the public want to address this board? If not, we're moving on. Committee reports. I will ask that if your committee wants to make a comment on matters that are not being reflected later on in a motion for activity from the Library Board. Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, as far as the HR committee goes, I just would like to remind everybody, you all received the manual, the HR manual, and it's pretty substantial. I know it was a lot of pages and everything, but I'm hoping that you'll get all your questions and everything, any concerns that you might have about it, if you would call Julie and ask her ahead of time before we get to, because we are going to be voting on that in the July meeting, so just a reminder to please get all your questions and concerns out there ahead of time and.
I had a great response. I have heard from a number of you, so thank you so much. Some of you dropped off your actual packet with edits, which I appreciated. Kristin Sullivan, our new HR specialist, is working through all of those. She will track if you had a question, she will make sure that there's an answer. You will have all of that in your packet. I'm hoping I can give it to you even before it goes in the packet and give it separate to you, to give even more time, but it will hit the packet and give you plenty of time, and she will have your name and the question and then the answer. She's doing, I've checked in with her, and she's doing a great job. She hasn't run into anything that seems out of the ordinary in terms of questions that you have so far, so I appreciate all of you sending your information and thoughts.
Any other committee comments that aren't going to be addressed in the Library Board Action section? If not, we'll move to matters for Library Board Action. First of all, the fourth quarter amendments to accounts two-seventy-one and two-seventy-two for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four on page twenty-three through twenty-seven.
So the Finance Department asks us always to finalize what we think will be our final numbers, and this would be the fourth quarter. Anything that's highlighted in yellow is a change that I'm aware of, either because it is a substantial and locked-in number, or in working with the Finance Department, we decided on a number that it would probably come to by the end of the year. They don't like to be over, so we bring it up so that we're under what we are anticipating to be the final numbers for the year. So those are all, all changes, and you can see where, on the first page, page twenty-three, the significant changes that were noted with the interest in investments and the unrealized gain and loss of investments as well. Those numbers changed significantly, as trustee Bartlett had mentioned. Not too many changes, really, or did they go up very much. Page twenty-seven, where the two-seventy-two account is, I did have some other projects which did get approved by the board, but hadn't been reflected yet in some of the budget documents, and so that's where I am shoring up and making sure that those numbers are reflected on capital and business, building-type projects that we had going throughout the year. They're noted down at the bottom of page twenty-seven in yellow, and then I highlighted the unexpected costs that you were aware of through the budget process in our half-year time. I went ahead and highlighted those in red so that you could see that those were additional things that came up, and then made the adjustments in the fourth-quarter column for you.
Picking up on that a little bit, to me, the, the, you know, the bottom-line numbers in both two-seventy-one and two-seventy-two accounts, that instead of having a deficit of four-forty-six, five-thirty-six in account two-seventy-one, we're anticipating a deficit of two-hundred-and-fifty-five, two-sixteen, which was really savings of about a hundred-and-ninety-thousand. And then likewise, in two-seventy-two account, as Julie has already acknowledged, there was a slight increase there from one-million-five-sixty-two, eight-twenty-four to one-million-five-ninety, one-ninety-four, primarily because of expenditures that didn't get made last year that are being made this year.
And a little bit of that interest showing also in the two-seventy-two as well. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. Approve?
Move to support.
Oh, I, I don't think the move, I, I didn't move it. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, motion to approve.
Now, you can support it. Any, any discussion on the fourth quarter amendments to accounts two-seventy-one and two-seventy-two?
And thank you to the Finance Committee for sitting down with me and going through everything in advance.
No discussion?
Okay.
Secretary, would you take the vote?
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Helvengas?
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Second item for library action is the operating agreement with the Friends of the Novi Public Library. This is on page sixty-two to sixty-six of our, of our package. Julie and I sat down with the Friends probably now about five, six weeks ago and went through the, through this, every, we try to do this every year. Most of these changes are just kind of updating, you know, the dates and a few corrections and so forth. The primary change here is in section three. We're, we're trying to gear up with the Friends to, you know, solicit or receive larger donations. The Friends get a lot of donations, you know, whatever, five-hundred-thousand dollars or something, but we're going for some bigger stuff these days. So this section, uh, set three has been added to try to address the, we always have this wonderful cooperative relationship, but it's just devoted to how we want to deal with donations that may be given to the Friends, because they're a 501(c), there's an advantage to some donors to give it to the Friends as opposed to directly to the library, but the library will cooperate with these donors and the Friends if they're trying to earmark their, they want to make sure that the donation goes to the Children's Section or the International Section or whatever. So this is basically a paragraph of cooperation between the Friends and the library to help, help achieve greater donations.
They were very receptive to partnering with us on this and, and trying to make some opportunities for donors that might be looking for that 501(c)(3) status, so I appreciate Sue Johnson and the board for entertaining this, because I know they, they will have to do a little bit more when it comes to paperwork and stuff, because they will obviously send the acknowledgements and, and then work with me to sit down with the donors, but I think this is a, a great way for us. I know we haven't had a chance yet to, to think thoughtfully about a foundation yet or an endowment, but this is a way that we can at least keep moving and benefit for our donors who are, are looking for that opportunity, knowing that they need that 501(c)(3) status. So I thank the Friends for the opportunity and being willing to consider this. We are looking at, we have, the library itself, so we have to remember, we are separate entities. The library itself is creating a brochure, which Lori and Kat have been part of. I know that we've been going back and forth with some language, Brian and Mark and Lori, we've been going back and forth with some language of how to put that into the library's brochure to tell, you know, potential donors about the opportunity, about working with the Friends and that 501(c)(3), 501(c)(3) status. So we're going to need to meet, I think we've had now too many emails that were, were lost in translation, which is okay, and we want to bring the Friends in and bring Sue in because she's, she also is aware of, you know, those types of donations being made in that, in that regard. So we'll sit down and we'll get that language shored up, probably after the holiday, and then we'll be able to, I don't need an approval, but I'll get the Finance Committee and make sure that everything seems well explained, and then we'll go ahead and be able to use that brochure in a, in a bigger capacity to attract donors. And then I know that trustee Bartlett and President Stirring are interested in working with the Friends to perhaps do a program where they can explain how, you know, your donation can benefit you, and explain a little bit about the types of things that can be used in order to make a donation in that way, using a 501(c)(3). So we'll be looking at doing that probably at the end of summer, early fall, to help people understand that opportunity. So thank you for your time, because I know we've gone back and forth, lots of edits.
Well, thank, thank you, Julie, for trying to keep up with all the edits, because as you can imagine, between Brian, Lori, and myself, we had a lot of comments, and we went back and forth, and Julie tried to incorporate those comments and change them.
I did, I did. And then I finally said, Brian, I think we need a date. So I appreciate it, and I think, I, I do believe we've got a wonderful collective mind who understand the financial, you know, needs, and we'll, we'll get something put together pretty soon.
Each version was better than the one.
It was, it kept getting better, absolutely.
That's all you can ask for.
Then there were questions, so, yes, but I, I'm, I'm very confident we'll get there. We need just a couple of weeks, and then we'll, we'll have something ready to put out to the community. And I, I actually have a donor that's waiting, so that's why I'm kind of, you know, pushing you along, because I, I emailed and said, something's coming, so, yeah, actually, I have a couple, so this will be good to try out and see if the language makes sense and, and works well, so, yeah. All right, thank you.
Well, once we get the, once we approve the agreement, I mean, we don't have to get the language for the flyer approved before somebody donates money.
No, not at all. Right, not at all, yes. We're, we're good once the agreement is approved, yes. Yeah, that's for just more marketing opportunities, yes.
I think between the three of us, we're going to need bigger, a bigger space.
No, I'm going to tell you to write tight. That's what I tell Dana, she knows, I'm like, write tight. Got to be succinct, right? Sometimes too much is too confusing, and I think that's what happened, and I think we, we hit a moment where we were like, oh, we need to, we need to talk, so we will do that in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll support.
Been moved and supported to approve the operating agreement with the Friends of the Novi Public Library. Any discussion?
Just a real quick question. In section three, so I know it's an agreement upon a representative from Friends and a representative from the board.
Yes.
In the, in the event, I don't see this happening, but in the event that there's a disagreement, like it's a stalemate, what do we do?
Well, it, I mean, it, it really would be upon the donor, what they want to do.
Got it, okay.
And, and this, what this means is, the library's always willing to work, but if, if they're looking for an opportunity through a 501(c)(3), we have that other option.
Okay.
So does the donor want to do that? It would be completely up to the donor. The donor, of course, can donate directly to the library. There is not that 501(c)(3) benefit right now, but there's still an opportunity for donating, absolutely. And, and there's, I know the tax, the taxes are minimal then without it, but there are still opportunities.
Okay, perfect.
Brian?
Yeah, the bottom, the real bottom line is if the donor is doing a direct IRA contribution through a QCD, they cannot go directly to the library.
Right.
The donors themselves cannot touch the money. It has to go directly from their, their IRA custodian directly to a 501(c)(3), and that's the, that's the purpose of the Friends, you know, in that, that regard, so.
Any other discussion or questions? Ask the secretary to call the vote.
Okay, I'm like pivoting. Trustee Helvengas?
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Item three in matters for library action, the library closings for two thousand and twenty-four to close at five- The library closings for 2024 to close at 5:00 p.m. on Monday, December 23, 2024. Those are all listed on page 72.
So I'm bringing back 2024 just because I'd like to recognize December 23rd and closing at 5:00. Normally we close at 9:00. It's a Monday night. I don't expect us to be super busy knowing that we're coming on the, the Christmas holiday. So that would be a change to already what you had put in place for 2024. And then 2025 is brand new. These are all new dates that I'm proposing based on looking at the calendar and, you know, how the dates are falling for long weekends and, and things like that. So there's really not, I mean, what I did, if you look at 2025, the only thing I highlighted was the December 23 close at 5:00 because everything else stayed consistent with what was done in 2024. So that was the only change is to, well, is to point that out to you as a different change.
Well, in that case, I would entertain a motion to, for items three and four to be voted on together, which could be to accept the library closings for 2024 with the current adjustment and the library closings for 2025.
Still moved? I'll support that motion.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve the library closings for 2024 and 2025, reflected on pages 72 and 73. Any discussion, questions? If not, I'll ask our busy secretary to call the vote.
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes, and Trustee Helvengas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Item five, revisions to the collection development policy, which is on page 74 through 79.
So as you see, there's very little changes. What actually was recognized is the fact that we don't have a collection specialist position anymore and we're going more general with librarians. Because many of our librarians can accept the information, but then they'd work with me when it comes to any concerns with, you know, select, obviously we have a number of librarians that are doing selection. If there was a concern for our local author criteria, you know, we took that out and it's members of the Information Services staff, which is librarians again, just highlighting it more general so that we can keep, you know, the, the policy more, more fluid. When you look on page 78, it's adding the word resident because it's a resident request form that we have. We don't need the form approved, but the D, um, the DEI committee has met and they made some recommendations. I worked with my team and we do have a form that we're presenting to you just to show tonight. I wanted you to have the form plus the policy so that you could see them in, in cooperation with each other. But really, they're very, very basic changes that were proposed. I move to approve. Oh, okay.
Who's making?
I move to approve, yes.
I support. Oh, who said second? Lori?
Okay.
Any discussion or questions in connection with the collection development policy revisions?
Uh, just to give some context for everybody, as Chair of DEI, our committee, you know, it took several rounds of really like digging into the reconsideration form because we really wanted it to ma, we wanted to make sure that the language was specific enough to kind of take someone through the thought process of why they want to reconsider a material. And also give our staff enough information so they can thoughtfully engage with that resident. And, you know, I think with the addition of Trustee Helvengas on the committee as well, so Trustee Crawford, Trustee Helvengas and myself, um, we were able to come up with what you see today with the staff. The staff did the majority of the work, but we gave comments to it. And I think that this is a good path forward for us because it empowers the staff to be able to, to go through this process in a thoughtful manner. And hopefully it, it helps everybody going forward. And I don't know if the rest of the committee wants to give any further comment to it. No? Okay.
Well, this doesn't involve a change, but the one item that's here that I like and all the seminars and so forth that I've gone to is the question, did you read, view and listen to the entire work? Which I think is, all, all the questions and all the comments here are important, but to me that one is maybe a little bit higher up.
Yeah. It, it's just so important because I think like in our, maybe not in our personal profession industry, but in the library science industry, they really are facing a lot of reconsiderations all over the country that seem, at least perceived, are quite scripted. And it's almost the same materials that are being targeted all over. The same word usage is being brought forward when they're asking for reconsideration. And so we just want to make someone who is passionate about it stop and think and think it, think all the way through why they truly want it reconsidered. And if they're able to engage with the material first and then still feel passionate about it, then, okay. But there's been like, um, I think I saw a documentary on that where there was a, a school district, I forgot which state, but, um, the school district actually came together and asked the people who were really passionate about certain material to read the material together with them. And after they actually engaged with the material fully, most of them withdrew their reconsideration requests. And so that's, that's, I think, the auspice behind that. So we appreciate the support tonight.
Any other discussions, comments? If not, I'll ask the secretary to call the vote.
Okay.
If you have a chance between taking all the notes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Helvengas?
Yes.
And Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Matters for library action number six, which is the meeting room rental and use policy revisions, shows up on page 86 to 90 in our handout.
So this, this did have a, a number of changes. We're trying to make it again easier. If you look on the first page, we took out the, the meeting room capacities and stuff because sometimes that can change and it depends on how the room is used. So we didn't want to lock in and have something where someone would come back and go, but your policies is this, and if we can't fit it because they want a certain arrangement of the room, that could impact it. So just trying to keep it, you know, simple as possible if we can. Just a, you know, few, the maximum capacities, as you can see, that, that one bullet point that we noted. When you look at setup, this is where the major changes are. We, we do a lot of meeting room rentals and for the most part, they're very positive and they go well. However, we do have a few groups that we've run into lately that when they are renting, they're showing up an hour before they can get into the room. You know, they, they call and say, yes, 6:00 is the time. They show up at 5:00 and they become demanding to want to get in the room. So we've had to get a little more specific and, and have it in writing clearly so that they understand that when you rent a certain time, that is the time that the room will actually be available. My team actually needs time to turn over a room sometimes and, and especially during the week. With us guaranteeing teen space till 5:00 and 5:30, that means that we need an hour depend, because that room is set up specifically with a ping pong table and all types of things that the room requires, you know, to, to have our teens use it. If someone needed that room set up for theater style and for 100 people, you have to take down and reset up in a whole new way. And so we, we've had to get a little more specific with our language and if someone's coming in and when they've signed that contract, they've signed it saying that they agree to the room to be set up the way they've told us they want to and we will honor it. We've actually had people come in and then walk in the door and go, oh, this doesn't work. Well, we can try as best as ca, as we can to turn it around, but the time is not always available, nor do I have sometimes the staffing. And so to alleviate that, we're putting some costs also onto doing that if, if that's what happens. If they really need us to change a room significantly, we're going to have to charge them in order to do that. So that's why you're seeing a, a little bit more language here relating to that and, and fees and making sure that they understand, you know, that we're locking into that agreement once they approve that room setup. The other auspice for why this is coming up is we're giving the opportunity pretty soon for people to rent and set up their times online. They don't necessarily have to call because that was also, you know, they couldn't always get ahold of us and get a quick response. So we're going to give them that capability to go online, see if the room is actually available and then put in their request. So they're doing all that work ahead of time and checking, you know, at home. Oh, this date not good? Well, maybe in my calendar, this date will work. And they're able to move a little farther beyond and get a little more information and not have to wait and it be, you know, kept in, in the admin office as long. So this, this is why some of these changes came up for, for us to do this with, um, with, with the new policy. Really not major changes, but things that will work better for us and hopefully be able to give a more positive message when send, you know, when signing up people for the, for the rooms. Still a very big business and something that we do and appreciate the opportunity and, and, you know, giving it to our community as well. And we're also very much the, one of the cheapest in town still, which I think we should be. You know, we are the public library and we, we just want to provide the spaces as best we can. Any questions, anything on?
I have a couple of comments and questions, but I, I'd like to get the motion on the floor first and then we go through it then. If anybody will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve. Any, any discussion or comments? I have, I have one.
Yes, go for it.
It, it's in the cleanup section.
Okay.
It says reservation requests must include adequate time for the renters' own setup and cleanup needs. Meeting room use, including cleanup, must end 30 minutes before the library closing time. And I kind of understand why that is nice for the library to have this end 30 minutes before closing time, but I think doesn't that pose a problem, especially if we're considering changing our hours, that this would mean the meetings would have to be done by 7:30?
If we were to change, we would. We would have to. But here's the other thing. The reason why this is coming in is the next morning, we might have something and we also need the ti, if it's a big changeover, we might need a little bit of the evening plus the next morning to get ready for that next rental. So we're trying to meet, you know, a few different needs by rentals that are coming in. And some people really like the mo, we've had a lot of early morning rentals, which we love to do because they cost a little more because it's before hours. But then we've got to still have that setup time and, and work that into my staffing. And I, I, you know, without doing overtime and those types of things, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help that as much as possible. For the most part, Mark, I can tell you, this does not reflect library programming at all. So let me just be clear with that. Library programming is completely different. We run that on our own and, and to our needs. But we would be having someone, at this point, they'd have to be done by 8:30. What we're finding is that if we have it at 9:00 or even 8:45, people are ignoring and not wanting to leave. And so I'm then, I, I run a risk of then paying staff overtime to sit there trying to get people out when they have date, they, they have times that they said they'd leave and they're not leaving. So that's, that's what I'm running into.
Could it be addressed by charging them?
Yes, it can be. And, and we are. Yep. If they go over, we will, we can, we can do that. And they can actually add to it and I can, and I can work from there if they add enough, if they add some timing. We can make that work. But yes, they, they would be charged.
Be up to closing time if they're going to pay for it.
If, if, we'll, we'll work on it, but I, I, it's more, it's, it's very difficult trying to get people out of the building. That's what we're running into. I'll be very honest.
They love our building.
They do love our building. We've got a great space. But I, I, I don't mean to say this, but I think it's a little disrespectful. You know, you, you are, you talk with us and you say, oh yes, our time is this and we're going to be out. And then we go nicely and say, your time is up. And then there's this uncomfortable conversation then that happens.
Trying to negotiate.
Yeah, and so we don't, I don't want to put that on my staff if I don't have to. I mean, they're, they're equipped to handle it, but it just doesn't seem right. And so we try to, we're, we're trying to do that earlier. That's when some of the announcements start too, by 8:00 and 8:30. And so hopefully they're, they're also then getting that note, you know, from the building itself that we're going to be closing. But, yeah, it's been difficult.
Any other comments or, Cap?
Yes.
For the future, when we go to the electronic reservation system, is that something that's just automatically approved if the space, okay?
No.
Okay, I was going to say.
They, they can get in the queue, but until they get approval from us, that's when the approval occurs. But it just allows them to see more of the opportunities for spaces available. But yes, the, we still own, we still own the yes and no button on that one.
And then it's not including study rooms. Those are still first.
Study rooms are, are open and available at any time. We don't do any reservation on our 10 study room spaces. That's a great question.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanted to say, I think that's excellent, the whole website idea. Because I, I rented a room and it was wonderful working with your staff and everything, but there was that communication back and forth. Or if I could find the date and see that it was available to begin with, you know, it just eliminates all that.
And you can then already send it in, you know, as the request. So that's actually with the new software that Dana and our marketing team, we had to change this year and that came with it was this opportunity to be able to do that and, and, and then take a little bit of a lead.
Great.
Yes, thank you. Anything else that I can answer for you?
Is there any recommendation, like, you know, if they, if they rent for three hours and, you know, somewhere you can specify a recommendation like, like, um, it will take this much of time for setup, this much of time for going out, recommendations to the?
Oh, we do that in our conversations with them. If they tell us what type of space and, and how they're using the room, that usually allows us to give them the recommendation of what we'll need to set up and then what time for, for closing up as well. I wouldn't do that because there's so many different variables to the way the space is used, yes. Thank you.
Cap, would you call the vote for the meeting room rental and use policy revisions?
Okay. Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Helvengas?
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
And Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Item number seven for matters for library board action. The patron behavior policy revisions, which are on page 97 through 102.
So again, not very much here as well. The only major thing that was brought in was we are getting rid of a, a non-discrimination policy and bringing it into the patron use policy. If you look on page 99, there's a non-discrimination paragraph that's being added and we used to have that as a separate policy on its own. So we wanted to bring it in with what actually we would be dealing with usually when it comes to patron behavior. As you know, we changed from guest to patrons, so now it's called the patron behavior policy. But very, this was attorney reviewed because we, this is probably, next to the collection development, which I would say is second, this is the number one policy that we use when it comes to just usage of the building with the public. As you can see, all the different categories and things that we, you know, bring attention to. Loud noises, you know, blocking access, announcements, things like that. These are all things having to do with interacting with the public. And so we added on page 99, we brought in the non-discrimination paragraph there so that it's right in. We put the, we had a little bit of language with exception of bicycles on page 100, you can see that. Under verbal harassment, it's specific to threatening language or writing will not be tolerated. That was specific from our attorney to keep it very concise with just that language. And that's it. Just, just a couple of things. You know, this policy committee has been relooking at everything and going through a, a very thorough review. So that's why you're seeing everything come back.
Move to approve?
I support.
Move to approve and support.
Who, uh, who moved to approve? Okay, thank you. Uh, let me make sure I have that down. All right. Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Helvengas?
Yes.
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
And Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
And Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Nice to hear all these things being approved.
I know, thank you. You had a lot of homework.
I will just call briefly your attention to the communications in pages 105 through 107. A lot of thank yous to Julie and her staff for the very accommodations that were being made to these people. I won't read them, but nice to see the thank yous. That brings us to point in our agenda for a closed session. This is for the director's annual review. By approving the consent agenda, we've already approved the closed session. So at this point, we're going to go to the closed session and we will be back.
Yes. And we're going to go right behind.
I'm from closed session, which was the annual review of the director. At this time, I would entertain a motion to give the director an annual 4% increase.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley says yes. Trustee Hauvengas?
Yes.
Trustee Galapu?
Yes.
And trustee Stern?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Now I guess a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We do it by acclamation?
Yeah.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.